Good evening, I'd like to call order the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
And Mayor Fox.
I am here. Item four is a request for continuance of any public hearing agenda item. Do we need to continue any items? Okay, city clerk has one item, but it will be not handled under this set. Okay, very good. And that moves us to item five, that's special presentations, and I'll go down to So our first presentation, I'd like to invite up to the podium Dr. Helen Cox. Helen is our Sustainability Division Manager, and also I'd like to invite up Garrett Crawford, our Landscape Maintenance Supervisor from the Public Works Department. If those two folks would join me at the podium, sneak it up behind me. This year, Thousand Oaks will celebrate our commitment to preserving a clean and healthy environment, as well as the important role that trees play in that commitment. By proclaiming Arbor Earth Day, Helen, can you please tell us about how the city plans to celebrate our Arbor Earth Day this year?
So the city is once again looking forward to hosting our annual Arbor Earth Day. This year's main event will take place on April the 28th at the Grant Brimhall Library, where we'll be hosting both indoor and outdoor activities. We also have activities throughout the whole month of April, which includes several evening presentations at the library and other partner events. The celebration will include films and discussions, kids' shows, and activities, displays, hands-on workshops, and a variety of presentations. So we invite you all to go to toaks.org/AEDay for more information and a full schedule of events. Again, that's T-O-A-K-S dot O-R-G slash A-E-Day. Thank you.
Evening Mayor and City Council. I'd like to take this opportunity to present to you two awards. The first being our 20th consecutive year as a Tree City USA, which is awarded by the Arbor Day Foundation, and our second award, which is our second year as a Bee City USA, which is presented by the Bee City USA Organization. These two awards demonstrate that the City of Thousand Oaks is a leader in environmental stewardship, and without your support and guidance from the council, the City of Thousand Oaks and the Public Works Department would not be able to provide the residents with the high level of service that these organizations require to award these designations. Thank you.
So Garrett, Helen, it's my pleasure to present to you this proclamation in honor of Arbor Earth Day, and as Helen pointed out, Thousand Oaks is Tree City USA. We are Thousand Oaks, and we are proud of our oaks, and we are proud of our preservation of the environment and in particular, our oak trees. And so with that, it's my honor to present Our next presentation, I'd like to welcome to the podium Five Star Theatricals Managing Director, Will North. Will is here with the cast to give us a preview of the upcoming production of The Hunchback of Notre Dame. And so, Will, come on up and tell us a little bit about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Yes, we would love to invite you all to our upcoming production of The Hunchback of Notre Dame. It opens April 20th and runs through April 29th. This is actually the Ventura County premiere of this classic Hugo Victor Hugo novel and Disney, based on the music from the Disney animated film. So this is the first time in Ventura County this music and this performance has ever been produced. So we're really excited about that. We have performances on Fridays, two on Saturday, Sundays, and a Thursday performance as well, Thursday evening performance. Be sure to go to fivestartheatricals.com to make your ticket reservations. And now I'm going to introduce one of our stars of the show, Cassandra Marie Murphy, who you may remember, yes, you may remember from our production of Evita. She portrayed Eva Peron in our production of Evita a couple of years back, and she is doing the role of Esmeralda in Hunchback of Notre Dame, and she will be accompanied by our music director, Dan Redfeld, on piano. So I now turn it over to Cassandra Marie Murphy and Dan Redfeld.
I don't know if you can hear me, or if you're even there. I don't know if you would listen to a gypsy's prayer. Yes, I know I'm just an outcast. I shouldn't speak to you, but still I see your face and wonder, were you once an outcast too? God help the outcast hungry from birth. Show them the mercy they won't find on earth. God help my people, they look to you still. God help the outcasts, or nobody will. I ask for nothing I can get by, but I know so many less lucky than I. Please help my people, the poor and downtrod. I thought we all were the children of God. God help
Cassandra Marie Murphy, everyone, and Dan Redfeld. And another, just piece of trivia for you, if you're wondering if you may remember, my hair is not normally red. It's red because I'm portraying the role of Quasimodo. So I look forward to seeing you all at the show as well, from that side of the stage. So again, April 20th through the 29th, Hunchback of Notre Dame. Look to see you all there. Thank you.
Very good.
And I just wanted to remind the audience that we have top-quality caliber artistic performances here in Thousand Oaks. You have no idea the wealth of talent we have here in Thousand Oaks. I just got back from seeing several shows on Broadway. This, what we have here is definitely Broadway. You don't have to fly to New York, save the airfare, just come and see Five Star Theatricals.
Will, I totally get the red hair thing, totally. I'm normally not a shaved head, I'm going for the King and I. Yeah, big theater debut, thought I'd give it a shot. All right, we'll move to, that concludes our special presentations, and we'll move to item six, that's our public comment.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. There are 16 individuals who have presented speaker cards in pursuit of council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our first speaker is Roslyn La Berte. Okay, better than I normally do, followed by Margarita Asail. Thank you. Good evening. You can move over to the larger mic there, okay.
Mayor Fox, City Council. I wanted to bring up the SB 54 Sanctuary Cities, and this is regarding that, I'm sorry, this is regarding that the state of California has gone ahead and has decided to just not even go with the federal law, which, which says that we have to have, we have to have our people and our law enforcement make sure that people that come into this state and country legally. I wanted to tell you that my parents came here from another country, and I was born here in Los Angeles, and they filled out all the paperwork. It took them years and years to get here. And now people just come across the border, and they can have all the monies and schooling and everything, and it's, it's allowed. And I'm just saying, when, when did that happen? Where California can just decide to do what they want and not enforce the federal government's agenda? And that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Allison Ellerman, and that will be followed by Margarita Asail. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Very good.
I realize this isn't on the agenda, but I, as well as the person who just spoke, feel that it's vitally important that we take this issue up with the city council. I'd like to ask the council to consider exempting Thousand Oaks from the state's new sanctuary law. Senate Bill 54 does not comply with federal law, which is in charge of immigration, not the state of California. We're either a nation of laws, or we have nothing. If we decide to no longer abide by the Constitution, it'll just be a free-for-all. We'll just go back to the wild, wild west. The law is the glue that holds us all together. The primary duty of the government is to protect and defend the people of the United States. There comes a time in everyone's life where you have to decide what is important. This, in my opinion, will determine the success of your life. Did you stand up to defend what is right, or did you cave to the pressures of the few? I'm sure as parents, you all tell your kids to do the right thing. Well, this is your opportunity to show them that you will do the right thing, that you can stand up to the pressure and make them proud of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Margarita Asail, followed by Karen Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening, Margarita Asail from Westlake Village. As a legal citizen of the United States, I ask you to join the other locations in California like Orange County, Huntington Beach, and Aliso Viejo that have filed lawsuits to opt out of California's illegal law SB-54, which makes California a sanctuary state. SB-54 allows illegal aliens, many of which are repeat offenders, to go protected and unchecked, placing the law-abiding citizens' lives and families in danger. SB-54 says to the American citizen that his or her government cares more about the illegal aliens' freedom and welfare than about the law-abiding, legal Americans' safety and rights. Do what is right, choose the law of the United States of America for Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Karen Martin, followed by Jeffrey Burnham.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Karen Martin, Thousand Oaks. I'm actually incident number 3636178 in general traffic conditions, but before I get going on that, with the Arbor Day presentation, I would like to make a vote to save Oak Tree Number 48. Thank you. I spoke on January 9th, 2018, after no response from the Traffic Commission in eight months to open a conversation on noise problem on Lynn Road. I contacted the city managers often and spoke with Rachel Wagner when nothing was happening in my case.
Ms. Martin, could you speak into the mic or pull it down?
Sorry, sure.
Can you pull it down a little bit?
Okay.
There you go. Okay.
I spoke with Rachel Wagner and nothing, because nothing was happening with my case. She told me Jim Michiko was my contact and told him to call me. He's not returning my calls or emails. I understand he's involved with traffic calming techniques, which we need some. Sergeant Hagel said he would do a Monday through Thursday, nine-to-five saturation patrol. I walked Lynn Road from Camino Monzanos to Arbeleis from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM all four days and saw no patrol. Sergeant Hagel also was unaware that there are six motorcycle pads that were built on Lynn so it could be safely patrolled. Here's a quote from Sergeant Tom Bennett, February 2008, The Acorn. "Speed enforcement used to be impossible on Lynn Road because of lack of shoulder and such. That is no longer the case. Before the police staging areas were built, officers could give out about 25 tickets a month. Now they average about 45 tickets a month." So my question's from Mr. Michiko. How many tickets do they give monthly on Lynn Road now? When is the traffic study last done, February 16th, 2010, that's good for only seven years, going to be repeated? Are we getting rubberized asphalt with the overlay? Micro abrasion only decreases the drying time. Where's the money for the sound wall with the Dos Fiantos project? I believe that was a million dollars. How can there be no money for Lynn Road when it's affected the most by the three highest sales tax contributors to the Thousand Oaks General Fund, Los Robles Hospital, University Village, and CLU? Why won't Thousand Oaks stand by the guidelines provided for residential noise levels in the noise ordinance? I called RingCon Associates to have my own noise study done, but I was told it would be a conflict of interest, so I did my own. I took readings at a three-foot height for a half an hour on calm days, and none of the measurements included emergency vehicles or helicopters that would have added to the number and the noise level. We routinely average 75 decibel. Thousand Oaks Boulevard at Hampshire and the 101 at Lynn Road are only 65 decibel. Maximum levels on Lynn are from 85 to 100 decibel. These numbers are similar to working in a factory, but I would have OSHA to protect me. I know I'm not alone. I'd like to leave you with a recording from my front porch
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Jeffrey Burnham, followed by Tony, is it Doltz or Dulsey? Doltz, okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff. My name is Jeffrey Burnham. I'm running for US Congress. I come to you with three items. Number one, I would request that you put on your agenda to discuss abandoning SB-54 along with Orange County, the Department of Justice, and also the growing number of cities in this state. Number two, I expect you to all uphold your oath to the Constitution, please, and I will explain. And finally, three, I'd like you to support the Election Integrity Project. Councilmembers, Mayor, we have a national emergency. It's called illegal immigration. The government will tell you that we have 11 million illegal immigrants, but if you talk to the real people on the front lines, I say they will tell you it's 30 million. California is the worst offender. 28% of all illegal aliens come to California. That means one in seven is an illegal alien. I wouldn't, I would like to remind you that when you cross the border without documentation, that is breaking the law. You are a felon, and that is according to the Immigration and Nationality Act. Now, what makes it worse is the additional crime. The Department of Justice has already told us that there are 30,000 MS-13 illegal immigrants. What do we do with them? We don't deport them, we let them out of jail early. I want to tell you one more thing that's very important. All of these people intend to vote, and the laws are supporting them. All they need is a driver's license, motor voter. Isn't that an illegal invasion, a bloodless invasion, that we are just casually sitting by and listening to? Now, let's talk about the cost. The National Academy of Sciences says it costs $296 billion for illegal immigration to this country. That's all the welfare programs, police, school, housing, et cetera. Now, we have 28% of that. If you take away the $100 billion that illegal immigration contributes to our economy, plus another 20 billion that they contribute to Social Security that they'll never get, that leaves about $176 billion. 28% of that is $55 billion. That's a cost of $55 billion a year to the state of California. Not to mention that we have the highest poverty rates, we have the six highest taxes, we have the lowest quality of life, we have overpopulated housing, schools, and welfare. Now SB-54 is essentially making up their own immigration policy. The state cannot do that. Article 1, Section 8 and 9 clearly says that only Congress has the authority to make immigration law. That's unconstitutional, and if you uphold that...
Thank you, sir.
...then you're not upholding your oath. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Tony Doltz, followed by Allison Janet.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor, City Council, hello. My name is Tony Doltz. I am married and have two minor children. We live in Thousand Oaks. I have the privilege of knowing some of you who sit on the city council. I know that you value the safety of the residents of Thousand Oaks. Law enforcement in the City of Thousand Oaks collaborates with other federal and state law enforcement agencies to enforce all laws and keep the residents safe. There are millions of people from all parts of the world living in California that do not have the right to live or work in the United States. From time to time, some among these illegal aliens commit serious crimes, and among them, federal crimes. Something unfortunate has happened. Governor Brown assigned SB-54. SB-54, a new law, makes it illegal for local law enforcement to report criminal illegal aliens to the federal government. SB-54 also imposes penalties for private businesses that report criminal illegal aliens to the federal government. Reporting criminal illegal aliens is a safety consideration because the options are, one, for local law enforcement to let loose criminal illegal aliens into the community, or, two, to report them to the federal government, which may result on deportation if applicable. The governor has opted for the first option, to coerce local law enforcement to release these criminal illegal aliens into the streets, unnecessarily putting the city residents at risk. I ask you to consider joining other communities that are challenging the risks imposed by this law. I would like to offer my personal support to our city elected representatives and to local law enforcement to keep our residents safe. Could we join hands to reduce crime and protect life, limb, and property values of residents of this community? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Allison Janet, followed by Tasha Bosnic.
Good evening. Do you know that most children who don't get rescued from sex slavery don't make it to 18 years old? My name is Tasha Bosnic. I'm 13 years old, and I'm in eighth grade at Hale Charter Academy.
And my name is Allison Janet. I'm 18 years old, and I'm in 12th grade at Newbury Park High School. We are here today to tell you about a very important cause we are advocating for. We are members of the Young Leaders Council, a group of positive, proactive teens dedicating their time and energy to fighting sex trafficking through Imagine Fest. In addition to advocating for the cause, we play a significant role in the creation, planning, and execution of the festival itself. Do you know that 2 million children are exploited every year in the global commercial sex trade? Here in our own country, 100,000 kids are sold into sex trafficking every year. It's happening right in our backyard. Interstate 5 and Highway 101 are common travel routes for human trafficking. I am extremely close with my family. Many families sell their kids into sex slavery for money. This is the ultimate form of betrayal. I turn to my family for everything, and to realize these children's families don't love them breaks my heart. These kids do not have happy childhoods like we did, and I want to do everything in my power to change that.
This cause is important to me because as an eighth grader, I'm starting to think about my future. And these kids can't think about their future but to think to live one more day. It's very important to give them the help they deserve. Have any of you heard of or participated in Imagine Fest? Imagine Fest is a community event featuring yoga, art, live music, local vendors, food trucks, inspirational speakers, fun and empowering activities for children, something for the whole family. The festival is happening on Saturday, April 21st, at 11:00 to 7:30 PM.
Imagine is more than just a festival. 100% of the proceeds from Imagine Fest go directly to our beneficiary, Unlikely Heroes. Unlikely Heroes is a local nonprofit organization which rescues and rehabilitates child victims of sex trafficking here in the US and around the world. Since November of 2011, Unlikely Heroes has rescued over 300 children in five countries and opened seven restoration homes. The average age of children rescued is 11 years old. The average age of children rescued is 11 years old, but they have saved children as young as a few days old to boys and girls my age. Once the children are rescued, Unlikely Heroes provides them with a safe and loving home, education, medical treatment, and post-trauma therapy until they are adults and ready to enter the world.
If you feel compelled to support our cause, here are several ways to get involved. You can buy a bundle of tickets to give to your coworkers, family, and friends. You can list our event on the city calendar, and you can contact us with local small businesses for tax-deductible sponsorships and donations.
In return, we welcome you to attend the festival as our guests. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak here today. We look forward to collaborating with you in the future.
We have postcards, postcards if anyone's interested. Thank you.
Nice job, ladies.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's William Hicks, but you can call me Bill. Council members, I too am concerned about SB 54. It's in conflict with the supremacy of federal law over state law. It also is in conflict with the, with your oath to defend the Constitution. Please join Attorney General Sessions and the growing number of California cities and counties by officially standing against SB 54. If anything, I'm succinct in my statements, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes.
Mandy Jacob, followed by Bruce Boyer.
Good evening. Good evening, City Council members. Thank you for letting me address you. My name's Mandy Jacob, and I come from Newbury Park. I'm also bringing up SB 54. Just to tell you a bit about myself, I'm, myself am an immigrant, illegal immigrant, and I ran an immigration company for over a decade, so this bill is really close to my heart. I just was here tonight to prove to you that really this bill is unsustainable, it's illogical, it's illegal economically and financially as a city, let alone a state, we won't be able to sustain it. I just want to hit you straight with the fact, as Mr. Burham said, we're the poorest state in the nation. One in five of us is homeless, and I live in Rancho Canejo Community. I can see that there's a burgeoning homeless population there. We can, we have a tough time looking after them, and this SB 54 is going to drain the community even more. The other thing is, when we look at, there was a documentation done of legal Hispanics in the community, and when they were asked whether or not they believe in illegal immigration, shocking, 65% of them were against it. And the logic there is, as an immigrant myself, we know that we had to go through lots of checks and balances in the system, had to apply for years, not to mention financially, and prove how we were going to raise the economic standards of this country and city, whereas SB 54 goes right in the face of that, not to mention that it's illegal. As the Department of Justice spokesman, Devin O'Malley, said in a quote, "State lawmakers inexplicably voted to return criminal aliens back to the streets, and this puts all Californians at risk." We know also that President Trump has just revamped our tax system, and that is going to leave California floundering because we are no longer buffered now by all the other states. And given that statistic, along with SB 54, I don't know where else we're going to get our finances from. We've, we've got to keep in mind that we're dealing with a $1.6 billion deficit. So these are numbers that we can't just willy-nilly be throwing around without taking into account how we would actually support the convicted felons and illegal immigrants that will be drawn to California and then, of course, to the city of Thousand Oaks. If we don't stand up to SB 54, not only will we have increased crime and lowered living standards and general anarchy, but we're also going to be having to face federal justice. The Attorney General Jeff Sessions actually said, "Federal funds will be used to crack down on sanctuary cities and those that choose not to comply with federal immigration laws." So these are really important things that we've got to take into consideration, and I do implore you as the board not only to make this an agenda item, but to just join the ranks of the rest of the communities in opposing SB 54. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bruce Boyer, followed by Adam Haverstock.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Boyer. I'm candidate for sheriff here in Ventura County, and I want to speak with you about SB 54. It is a sanctuary state rebellion. Our Congress is vested with the authority to set immigration laws. No one argues that, except the politicians in Sacramento. Let me make sure we understand what this law says. This law says if our law enforcement officer turns anybody over to ICE, he is subject to arrest, prosecution, imprisonment, he will be stripped of his badge, he will be stripped of his pension. This is under threat of force. That is the definition of armed rebellion. We're not kidding around. This county has 650,000 adults. We have 100,000 illegal alien adults. Do the math, one in seven, one in eight, one in six. It is a, at this moment, bloodless invasion. You want to talk about money? Every illegal alien costs us taxpayers $9,000 per year, per illegal alien. And why are they illegal? Because they can't come here legally, because we vet people, and they know they aren't going to make it. That's why they come in. They're criminals. You want to look at the crime element? Illegal aliens commit four times the level of crimes as American citizens and 10 times the level of crimes of legal immigrants, because legal immigrants worry about getting deported. Illegals don't. Sanctuary state. The Ventura County Sheriff's Department is contracted by this City Council. The County Sheriff's Department is in rebellion. You are facilitating the rebellion because you're writing the rebels' R. tax check. You contract with them, and the contract says to carry out the laws. Well, if they're not carrying out the laws, then they're a breach of contract. So here's my suggestion. Let's put it as an agenda item. You hold the vote, and when you reject the rebellion of sanctuary state, you send a letter to the Sheriff's Department, and you tell them, either they get rid of the rebellion, or you get rid of them. Now, if I'm going to be the County Sheriff, you won't have a problem, because I will have defeated the sanctuary state rebellion. And if somebody else is in charge, why don't you fire that Sheriff's Department? Set up your own. I'm sure you could find somebody that could set up a police department for the city of Thousand Oaks that will obey the law and defeat the sanctuary state. You've all sworn an oath. I swore the oath as a soldier in the United States Army. That officer swore an oath, and I swore one as a candidate, to defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. So if you want to hand over the state of California or Thousand Oaks to the rebels, would you kindly take down our American flag? Because if you're going to fly our American flag, be an American city, be patriots. If they want to be rebels, let them find some rebel flag. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Adam Haverstock, followed by Thomas Adams. Mr. Adams, you're up next.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Adam Haverstock, I am the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Canejo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I just have a couple items I'd like to update you on tonight. The first is a couple of events. So on Tuesday, April 24th, is going to be our Principal for a Half Day Program, which is a collaboration with Canejo Valley Unified School District. It's a free program, but you do have to register in advance at the Chamber's website. It's in the morning from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. You get to go and meet a principal on a school site, you get a campus tour, you get to job shadow them, learn about education in today's schools, and then we have a luncheon where we honor the principals, and there'll be some remarks from CVUSD Superintendent Mark McLaughlin. So if anyone wants to attend, the registration is still open. We have a couple spots, but it is filling up fast, so please take a look at our website, canejochamber.org, to register. Secondly, is the Chamber's 40 Under 40 Awards coming up the very next day, on Wednesday, April 25th in the evening. We're going to be at the Canyon Club in Agora Hills, and we released our list of honorees, and honestly, I was going to try and pull out a few that are Thousand Oaks residents that are especially noteworthy, but there were so many that I thought, you know, I'll, I'm short on time tonight. So let me just say, there are many, many people that live or work in the city of Thousand Oaks that are going to be honored there, doing amazing things in our community, and they'll all be there receiving recognition. We're selling tickets for that event also at our website at canejochamber.org, and the million-dollar question on that one, you do not need to be under 40 to attend the 40 Under 40 Awards Dinner. It's, to get the award, you have to be under 40, but if you want to come and enjoy a fun night out and honor some young professionals, you do not need to be under 40 for that. And then finally, I'm very excited to announce the long-awaited spring issue of Canejo View. We actually just got it hot off the presses today, and I'll, I'll leave a copy with the clerk when I'm done here, but I think you're all going to get a copy in your mailboxes as well. I'm very excited, on a personal note, for those that know me, I'm a craft beer guy, and this is our beer issue. So this issue features several local breweries in the Canejo Valley, some beer tour companies, talks about the beer industry more generally, really, really great piece. There's also a article about State Senator Henry Stern, who you may not know, is the first millennial state senator in California. And then finally, there's a business profile on Lorena High School. So some really great stuff to read. Feel free to take a look when you get a copy in your mailbox. And unless there are any questions, that concludes my report this evening.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Thomas Adams, followed by Tom Hunt.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, members of the council. Good to see you again. My name is Thomas Adams. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for 20 years, coming tonight to speak about SB 54. And I guess the rhetorical question is, is the council going to have the courage to stand up against SB 154? You swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, as did our state legislature, but they seem to have lost their way. The fact of the matter is, the federal government governs the international borders, and it is our position to uphold the federal government law and the Constitution of the United States of America. California is about $1.3 trillion behind the eight ball if you look at all debts and obligations. We're spending about $30 billion a year in social services to illegal aliens alone. I have nothing against illegal aliens. All of us are here from somebody else. If somebody wants to come here legally, I'll pick them up at the border. You know what? I'll pick them up at the airport. As long as they're doing it right, I have no problem, but we have an obligation to uphold the law for those who are breaking the law and coming here illegally. Instead of addressing the issue, the state, by, by supporting, by supporting the law, they continually raise our taxes to, to increase the weight on us, our gas taxes, our car registration taxes, the property taxes, sales tax, everything has gone up, while they continue to spend money on things we don't want them to spend money for. They keep finding more ways to squeeze us for more and more, and we're tapped. We, the people, have had enough. I'm spending an extra $60 a month now on gas. I drive for a living all around the greater Los Angeles. That's an extra $700 a year plus, depending, depending on how the year goes. I've had enough, and talk about taxation without representation, where is all that money going? The state of California really is overdue for a full-on audit, quite frankly, to find out where all these billions are going. The state legislative branches, executive and legislative branches have obviously gone rogue. We, the people, have had enough, and we're asking you to please stand up to SB 54, against SB 54. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tom Hunt, followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I got a whole bunch of statistics here, and they've all been quoted tonight. So I'm going to do away with them and just bring up one little subject. I moved to Thousand Oaks 50 years ago, and I was very proud of this city at that time, and I still am. And I appreciate all the work that the City Council and the mayor do, but I just want to ask you to do me one favor. With this SB 154, there is an element of fear that a lot of people have with the criminal element that is brought in by illegal aliens. So all I'm asking you to do is to show as much consideration to the public and the people in this town as you do the Thousand Oaks trees.
Nick Kidway, followed by Robert Hotson. Mr. Kidway's going to pass, Mr. Hotson. And after Mr. Hotson will be Vadim, Vadim Manzhos. That was our last speaker. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. I urge the City Council to opt out of enforcing SB 54 for the following four reasons. Number one, public safety is not served by SB 54. Existing law identifies the serious and violent crimes, which if committed by an illegal alien, make that individual deportable. Under SB 54, the individual serves a sentence then released, but the problem doesn't end there, which compromises the, the public safety. Immigration officers still have a job to do, but now they have to go out into the community and search for those individuals, exposing everybody in the vicinity to danger if the individual resists the search or the arrest, and surely capturing illegal, innocent illegal aliens in the same suite. How's that a good idea? I don't think SB or SB 54 promotes safety or trust in the community. I think it does just the opposite. Second, rule of law. The federal government has preeminent authority to regulate matters governing the entry, presence, and removal of aliens, and California has no authority to act laws that obstruct or conflict with federal immigration enforcement efforts. SB 54 violates the Supremacy Act, our Supremacy Clause of the United States Constitution, and members of the council must exercise their sworn duty not to enforce it. Number three, SB 54 is bad policy. By preventing the flow of information and transfer of individuals to immigration authorities, California is assisting illegal aliens to evade federal law enforcement or obstructing justice, on the verge of being criminals, criminal crimes in and of themselves. Surely, Thousand Oaks cannot condone or support that. Number four, and last, California doesn't impose SB 54's restrictions on information sharing on other topics, nor does it restrict the transfer of individuals to other law enforcement agencies for extradition, for example. On what grounds, then, does California not cooperate with extradition and deportation of criminal aliens? So I strongly urge the City Council to do the following. Pass a resolution in the support, in support of the rule of law by existing Thousand Oaks from enforcing SB 54. And I took the liberty of drafting such a resolution, and I left it with the, with the clerk. And then number two, unite with 10 cities and a growing number of others, seven counties and 18 states, in joining the United States versus California lawsuit against SB 54, case number 18-264. And I left a copy of these remarks with the city clerk, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is Vadim Manzhos. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Vadim Manzhos. I'm a legal immigrant from Ukraine, and I'd like to share with you that legal immigration costs time, money, and a great effort. I was political prisoner for three and a half, more than, three years and seven months in Ukrainian prison, and I escaped through Yugoslavia. I found out that my grandfather lived in Chicago in 1987. It cost me first marriage because, you know, once you're legal, you come here, you apply for political asylum. It takes years to get it, so my first marriage was destroyed by, by time. It took four years for me to get a political asylum approved. Then it took me three years to get green card, I, I think, but altogether, it took me 10 years to get a citizenship. Another effort was made in terms of studying English, because when I was, when I came here, I only knew yes, no, okay. And again, I came at age 31, which was not easy to, to learn. I was not a kid, or, you know, I was a young adult, but still, it took me a while to learn basic English. Years later, I found out that once, I'm a former hockey player, I was playing hockey, and three gentlemen approached me offering a full scholarship to play for a university. And I didn't understand what they offered to me, and then years later, I found out through one lady who attended the same ice rink that they offered me a full scholarship, even though, you know, the same time I went to Pepperdine University trying to evaluate my diploma from Pedagogical University. Pepperdine University, trying to evaluate my diploma from Pedagogical University, and it was $30,000 a year when I was making $12,000, $15,000 doing low-paid jobs. Then I became an employer, a small company, selling German windows and doors. And then I remember one gentleman comes in, no English, no paperwork, no nothing, you know, no social securities. He's asking me for a job. And, you know, I am an immigrant. I understand, you know, I'm trying to help, but on the other hand, it's not fair, absolutely not fair. I think you represent the city. You have to oppose the SB 54, I guess is what it's called. And also, one more thing, my brother, who's been here in the last 20 years, five times, always living on time, he was denied visa twice already in the last three years. How can you explain that? People come across the board, you know, with any, you know, without any papers, getting jobs, taking away jobs from American citizens, and then my brother, who never broke any law, are not allowed. Then his son also applied twice. He's 17 years old now. In the last two years, he was denied twice. So I want you to take a close, you know, attention to this particular law and, you know, not to become one of the sanctuary cities as many in California. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment. Mr. Powers, did you have any follow-up comments?
Just a couple of quick items. Mr. Mayor, we heard comments from Mrs. Martin this evening. Staff has been in fairly regular contact with Mrs. Martin on a number of concerns that she's raised, and will continue to do so to the extent that we're able to address new issues. We heard from some folks talking about the Imagine Fest, and we'll do what we can to help promote that event through our city-community calendar. And then finally, we heard from a number of individuals regarding the state of California's SB 54. First piece that everyone should know, and hopefully does know, the city of Thousand Oaks has not declared itself a sanctuary city. Thousand Oaks maintains a legislative platform. Issues like immigration, illegal immigration, gun control, and war are beyond the scope of local government, and those issues have been traditionally left to the purview of state and federal legislators. Finally, in sort of extensive discussions with our police chief, Tim Hagel, he has assured me that SB 54 is not hindering our ability to police Thousand Oaks and keep our community safe. And then finally, in some written comment cards, we heard from a few people regarding Hauser Circle and the sewer line expansion proposed there. It seems like there perhaps is a little bit of misinformation on that, and so I'm going to ask our deputy public works director, Cliff Finley, if he can step into the lobby to talk with any of those individuals that still happen to be here. Just for those that are here, the city has been engaging in some dialogue with residents out there, and at this time, doesn't intend to move forward with a sewer project, transitioning from septic to sewer out there. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Powers. That moves to item seven. That's the consent calendar. Any items, council, what's it called, special? All right, hearing none, how about a motion? Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move the consent calendar.
All right, Mr. Adams moves the consent calendar. Any discussion on that item? All right, hearing none, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. Move to item 8A. That's our public hearings. Ms. Rodriguez?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, agenda item 8A, regarding municipal code amendment, MCA 2018-70141, regarding separation standards between sensitive uses and commercial cannabis businesses. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Six individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have four minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Towne, you're going to handle the report tonight. Very good. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you. Tonight, you will be considering a proposal to essentially modify the existing ordinance regarding cannabis, to resolve situations which we basically observed during the process of considering various cannabis business locations in the city. And as we discussed at your last meeting, we came across scenarios where the proposed location met the intent of the ordinance but not the letter, and hence, it caused us to consider the exact wording in our ordinance and consider potential changes. Just in terms of background, last November, you approved the commercial cannabis ordinance. In December, you approved the selection process for cannabis businesses in the city, and in that context, that was limited to only one medical dispensary maximum and only one testing lab. At your last meeting, on March 19th, you authorized, actually initiated this amendment, and also, if you recall, allowed applicants to submit their location certification request after their formal application rather than before, as was the prior process. And then, at the end of March, the cannabis application deadline concluded, and so now we are in the process, as I'll narrate in a moment, of evaluating those applications. So tonight, we're really talking about a very sort of narrow portion of the cannabis ordinance, and it really has to do with the separation between potential cannabis business locations and sensitive uses. And that separation standard is 600 feet. That's in our ordinance. And when we speak of sensitive uses, it includes four different categories. It includes schools, both public and private, daycare facilities, youth centers, and then also, right now, the way that the ordinance is worded, it includes any residentially zoned property. The distance, the separation buffer, so to speak, is currently based on parcel boundaries, not the actual location of the proposed business. So staff tonight is recommending three changes to our ordinance to address these scenarios that staff has come across. I should note that we are not recommending any change to the numerical separation standard of 600 feet, nor are we proposing any change in how we define sensitive uses. So amendment number one consists of how we actually measure that 600-foot separation. And as I mentioned, in the ordinance right now, it's based on the property line, and it is not based on where the business is located. What staff is recommending is that council consider basing this distance on the distance from the front door of the cannabis business to the sensitive use rather than the parcel boundary. So in this illustration, if you consider this business on the far right-hand side of the schematic, the cannabis business, and you notice here, we have a property line and residential property to the left, which is, by definition, sensitive use. Under the current ordinance, the separation buffer is based on property line, so clearly, this location would not work because the property line separates residential from an industrial park property, which is the zone in which these facilities must be located. But because in many industrial areas, we have very large parcels, the business itself could be, as in this illustration, 700 feet, for example, from the actual property line. So from a practical perspective, the business meets the 600-foot separation, although it's based on a measurement from the front door of the business and not the property boundary. Staff thinks this is a more logical way to measure this separation rather than property line, again, because we often have parcels that are quite large, business locations are within other buildings or tenant spaces that can be far removed from the residential property and meet the intent of having a significant buffer. The second change is that, as I mentioned just a moment ago, the ordinance currently says that the distance should be measured from the cannabis business to residentially zoned property. So in this illustration, we have the cannabis business over here to the right. Let's imagine this is the property line closest to it. This is the line that separates the industrial property from this area, and this is an actual scenario. This area between this property line and this one is, in this example, a residentially zoned greenbelt. So it does not have any homes on it. It is not used by the public. Part of it in the real world is used for annual brush clearance, and this is actually quite common in all of our more modern tracts. We have perimeter lots around the tracts which are residentially zoned, but they are actually brush clearance lots. And so, again, in this scenario, the business location would not be permissible because it's 300 feet away from residentially zoned property, but again, from a practical perspective, is noted on the bottom of this illustration, the business could be, again, for discussion, 700 feet from the actual property line of the residentially used property. And when I use the term residentially used, that would include property with a home on it. It would include perhaps part of somebody's backyard. It would include a common lot with a clubhouse on it, things like that, areas that are actually used by the public, not just a brush clearance lot. So we've changed the definition from residentially zoned to residentially used. And then finally, we also have a scenario in town where a business could be within 600 feet. Here's the business location. It's on this parcel. Here's the line. But even if we use this proposed method, the front door is 500 feet from residentially used property, to also use the proposed method there. But in between, we have the 101 freeway or the 23 freeway, but in this case, it was the 101. So you have a barrier. There are no practical, direct pedestrian or vehicular pathways between the two. So although the business is within 600 feet, it is separated by essentially an immovable barrier. We think that in that particular type of scenario, that it's reasonable to consider a freeway as a substantial barrier, even though the actual distance is slightly less than 600 feet. So what would be the effect on the current cannabis applications? On March 30th, or by March 30th, we had received six applications for cannabis businesses, five for medical dispensaries, one for a testing lab. As I mentioned, staff is currently reviewing those applications for completeness. And in terms of the ones that were proposed, three already were certified. One is certified under existing rules. One is certifiable under new rules, as we just discussed, and one location is still to be proposed. So what we're talking about now would have a moderate effect on the number of applicants in terms of potential locations. Upcoming milestones to put tonight's discussion in context, we anticipate finishing our review of eligibility this week. That will conclude the first phase of the evaluation. The second phase, which is the initial ranking of the applicants, should be done by early May. That'll be followed by interviews with the applicants, site inspections, and further ranking as part of Phase Three. There will be a public meeting where residents can ask questions of the applicants, the residents that may particularly live in the area, and so we wanted to hear from the community in that context. And then finally, we are still on schedule to bring this matter back for City Council consideration on July 10th. So with that, staff is recommending that City Council consider and approve the municipal code amendment regarding separation standards as described in the draft ordinance, which is attached in your staff report. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Also, to my left, Marjan Bezadi, operations manager for the Community Development Department and manager for this process, is also here and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Questions for staff? All right, hearing none, we have some speaker cards on this item. Joe Kyle will be our first speaker, followed by Derek Tonato. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hello, Mayor Fox. Mayor Protem McCoy, City Council members and staff. My name is Joe Kyle. I'm a resident of Newbury Park. First off, again, thank you for embarking on this conversation and process. I support the ordinance the City Council is looking at here tonight. In speaking with Marjan earlier this morning, two more applicants were turned in after the deadline extension. As staff just stated, there's a total of six applicants. Unfortunately, three of clients of mine decided not to apply, even with location certificate being pushed to Phase Two. This is because of the pushback from landlords stating other entities were taking care of it. Two other applicants that I do not help, but I know, did not turn in applications because of the same reason. I hope this council keeps an open mind in allowing more than one dispensary, as well as allowing for less restrictive zoning for commercial zones in the future. I hope that the City Council knows, because of State Senate Bill 1302, this City Council, or this city, would have to allow for local licensed delivery services based outside the city to drop off within this city by state law. That is, if that State Senate Bill were to pass. Once again, that is State Senate Bill 1302. Ventura, Oxnard, Port Raine, Ojai, and Ventura County all allow for licensed delivery services to drop off medical cannabis patients within their jurisdiction, allowing for safe access. I do realize that Chief, sorry, Hagel, went blank. Chief Hagel had some difference of opinion on allowing that at the meetings before, so I know there are some things, some negative worries that he has about those. Please consider allowing for licensed delivery to come into the city to strengthen, to not strengthen the locally mandated monopoly that is being created. It has been a long, two-year process discussing medical and recreational cannabis. The last few months have been rather disheartening. I hope the City Council keeps an open mind when looking at the applicants. I will be showing up to the, I will be showing up with multiple patients to the neighborhood meeting in June to voice our concerns. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Derek Tonato, followed by George Gambola.
Pass.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Gambola. Following Mr. Gambola will be Bruce Boyer.
I pass.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Boyer.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Boyer, candidate for sheriff. I have no desire to have a medical marijuana dispensary or illegal marijuana dispensary. I have no desire to go there, but that's not the issue. I'd like to have more churches, but I'd like to have the freedom, whatever I want to embark on, or whatever they want to embark on, that they have the freedom to set up whatever business they want. And if you're going to restrict it to the point where they cannot set up their business, well, then what's going to happen when the City Council says, "Well, we don't like this business," or "We don't like that business"? The fact is, marijuana is legal. It was put before the voters. We passed it. I don't want to smoke any marijuana, but I believe that the citizens have the right to choose so. So what I do not want to see the City Council is set up some restrictive conditions that basically deny the citizen their right to have a business to sell a legal product. Now, if the marijuana's leaving in a sealed plastic bag, what difference does it make how far away it is from somebody's doorstep? If you want to set a reasonable limitation for 100 feet or something from somebody's house, that's fine, but there is a difference between marijuana being in the air, which I understand would intoxicate people that inhaled it, versus it leaving in a plastic bag. They're not explosives. It's not going to harm somebody 50 feet away, but what you are going to have, if you do not permit legal businesses, well, it'll go back to being underground. The people that want to smoke marijuana have smoked pot for 50 years because they want to. It was illegal. Did that deter them? No. We wasted a lot of money pursuing a pointless war on drugs. So now, if you want to create a situation where they can't have it, oh, you don't want to license the delivery. What, they're not going to have it? No. They're going to have an outlaw delivery. Now, there are people that... Now, there are people that do use medical marijuana, and you know, not all of them can drive. So if they need medical marijuana delivered, rather than taking four buses for half a day to go get it because they're undergoing cancer, please explain to me why making their ability to get this is somehow better? I mean, are you worried that you've got a 65-year-old cancer patient who's getting marijuana to deal with their chronic pain because they're dying of cancer? Are you really worried he's going to come to my grandson and try to stuff marijuana down his throat? I'm not. I'm not. Look, it's been illegal. That was the past. It grew out of the ground naturally. My family comes from Minnesota. It grew out of the ground. Everybody knew what marijuana is. Yes, that weed that grows out of the ground. How about we tone down the, "Oh, my gosh, it's an illegal drug," and recognize that it has value to some citizens and not make it harder for them? Hey, if they want to buy a beer, how many liquor stores do we have in this town? But yet, we want to discriminate against them because they want to smoke marijuana in the privacy of their own home? No. Let's live in a free country so that when people come and say, "Well, why do you have a church there?" Because it's our right. And my pastor made a very interesting comment. He said, "You know, Bruce, I'd like them to set up a marijuana dispensary right next to our church because those are the people that need to come to our church." So it'd be an interesting take if you actually said, "Set up every dispensary right next to a church." And if they're using it for cancer, awesome. But if they're just recreational and you take a view that I do that says, "You might want to see about doing something different," I'd like to have my door open next door to have them come on in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lorraine Johnson, followed by Mr. Kidway, you going to pass?
No, not on this.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Not on everything.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Lorraine Johnson. I'm from Santa Rosa Valley. I was living in Thousand Oaks for 13 years. I am in favor of the marijuana issue, cannabis. I just want you to know that for the last few months, I've been looking for a building, hoping that I would get the dispensary license. And I've come into a lot of problems with it. It's very hard out there. The landlords don't want us there. The board of directors don't want us there. If we offered to buy the building cash, they don't want us there either because they feel it's cannabis and they just don't want us there. I think the perimeter should be open in the larger area so we could have more opportunity to find a building. But I just want you to know all the problems that are out there, and I'm sure I'm not the only one that's having them. Everyone is. And some of the tenants, buildings that we've gone to, they feel it's a federal offense, so they don't want to touch it until the law is relaxed there. They suggest that come back when the certificate is available or if you get the certificate. So I don't really understand trying to submit a location certificate application when it's so hard for us to get a building and no one wants to commit to it, even though I submitted letters of intent. They don't want to accept them until the certificate is actually honored to someone. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nick Kidway, and our last speaker is Thomas Adams.
Good evening, Mayor Fox. I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name happens to be Nick Igbal Kidway. I'm a resident of Newberry Park since '77 or '79. I'm not going to debate that. I don't really have a dog in the race, but I did want to speak on this issue. And I apologize to the other five speakers is that people don't know it, that there is a fox grid here and it's based on the number of people. So up to five people, you get five minutes. If you have six to seven, you get four. If you go to nine, you get three minutes. Okay, I thought a manager was staring at me. Not really. Good. I'm still not in trouble. So you should talk to the council people and tell them to change this because this is an important issue to you folks. And just because I submitted a card or somebody else, that you lose one minute. And the real problem that I have and you should have is that, which is true with so many issues before this body, is that you continue it, continue it, continue it, finish it, continue it, continue it, until the people get sick and tired. And then, lo and behold, when hardly anybody shows up during a holiday hearing or something, thing is passed or failed, whatever. And so you should ask the body, and I ask also, is how many more meetings are you going to have? I mean, we just heard there's going to be a meeting in July on the same issue. The federal government has, or not the state has, federal government, I don't know. It is legal. I don't know. I don't smoke, so I don't get into the details. I go to wonderful Joe for guidance. He's a Newberry Park resident. And the staff is saying that there are three minor changes. One of the things that has not been mentioned, and forgive me and don't get too upset, but the smell is not compatible with a lot of us. And so if there's a lot of marijuana there, if the smell is coming to the other houses, I mean, I have a right to smell-free home. So that, I don't know if that has been looked at or not, and if some of the people, the problem happens in the liquor store, they have this thing written there, no, in fact, even Walmart has it, no drinking on the premises. You have to go away. So if this, sit there and they really needed it. I'm all for the people who are sick. In fact, I had a family member who had to take opiates, and I was so disappointed that doctors did not help her at all, help him her at all. We had to do it on our own so that she or he would not get addicted to this opiate, which has cost $1,000 a dose or something like that. But thank God, it's over. But I live right next, I live one street away from Amgen. My neighbors' friends live, share a boundary wall. If Amgen sells opiates and starts making opiates there, where would that come? I guess I know, we are not at that stage, but we should look ahead because Amgen is right there and Baxter is there too. Baxter is not a residential, but our neighborhood could be impacted if opiates are made and stored in those buildings, which are right next, there's just a boundary wall on that road next to Amgen. Not that I'm saying it will happen, but you know, I was, tried to be a scout. You have to be prepared. I remain concerned about driving. I mean, we still haven't come up with what makes you impaired having pot. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. The red light is on. I'm leaving.
You're usually really good about that, Mr. Kidway.
Yeah, I could not hear.
All right, Mr. Gamboa apparently is going to speak, so George Gamboa, and then we'll have Mr. Adams will be our last speaker. Good evening, sir.
Yes. I got into this, trying to get this dispensary going because of my wife. I've been married to her for 13 years. 13 miserable years of headaches, surgeries, one after another, one after another. She's had five brain surgeries, and she still has headaches. A friend of mine introduced me into it, and I was against it, but he said, "Try it," and might help her. And I did. And it helped her. She still has headaches. There's nothing I can do about it. But if I can help her with this, that's what I want to do. That's one. Two is, the city council issued a map where we can find locations. Will you tell me in this map which landlord is going to lease to me a piece of property? I walked up to one landlord, and he said to me, "I'll sell you the property." I won $195,000. I said, "Okay, I'll bring the check tomorrow." That is this property that falls in the blue. When he found out, when I had that cashier's check for $610,000, because I thought he was going to sell it to me, when he found out that I was putting a dispensary in it, he backed out and says, "I'm not selling to you." Okay, that's one. Here's another one. I said to the realtor, "Nail it." It falls in the area. I got another cashier for $355,000. When the association found out that it was for marijuana, they said, "No, we'll not take it." I go across the road. I must have spent four days driving, taking phone numbers of commercial buildings, calling every one of them. When they found out there was commercial, there was for marijuana, no, no, no. Everybody shut the door on me. Everyone, including the one that I was in plans. I had this sewed up for three months. And I figured, okay, I'll buy the building. That's what they want? I'll buy it. When he said, "No," when I put my application with the city, you know, I'm stuck. I had to tell her. Now I'm looking all over the place. I finally found one place, and this is on this map. But I don't, the map is not clear enough. The map goes to, you're saying M1 and M2. I found a place that goes to M2, but I'm pretty sure the city's going to say, "No, you can't cross that street." So what do I do? You guys tell me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gamboa. Our last speaker is Thomas Adams.
Uh?
Thank you, sir. We're good.
Good evening, once again, members of the council. I actually wasn't prepared to speak on this topic until I saw it on the agenda tonight. I actually could have brought a lot more information with me on this topic. In the case of medical marijuana, cannabinoids, I don't think very many people have a problem with that. I know I have seen people benefit from cannabinoids as long as the medical marijuana is managed properly. I think the issue before was people showing up with a hangnail and getting a certificate for medical marijuana. My concern is some of the slippery slope issues that we have with commercial-use marijuana. I invite everyone to do some homework on what has happened in some of the communities that have gotten too permissive. The promise of increased tax revenue really hasn't been there because anything, anytime you attach a government to a flow of something, the price goes up. So these entities wind up buying from the black market anyway, and it actually is increasing flow of drugs into some of these places rather than decreasing. I am against shortening the 600-foot distance. I believe that a safe distance away from children, away from schools, away from residential areas to keep from that influence. I'm in the wine business, and I grew up through the liquor business in general. And there's a lot of what they call influence advertising, ways of subliminally pushing these things or exposing these things into young people. And I'd like to point out one thing, until there is an equivalent of a breathalyzer for marijuana that will let you know whether somebody is .08 or .10 or something of that nature, I think it's a very, very dangerous way to go. You can test somebody's blood or test somebody's hair and see that they engage in cannabinoids, but somebody can get behind the wheel after smoking, and there is no actual provable, court-enforceable way of knowing whether or not they're intoxicated under the influence of marijuana. There are certain eye tests and coordination tests, but there is no way of managing that. And getting behind this slippery slope of becoming too permissive under this, first of all, is going to wind up easing things up for other things that I don't think should be eased up. And secondly, I think it's just an overall dangerous influence into the streets until we can have a handle on this, until we can, you know, know we can have that. I don't think we should, I've been to Europe a good number of times, creating a more permissive society, if you've ever been to Amsterdam. It does branch out into other things. I know people say it's not a gateway drug, but I have seen otherwise. I have seen young children dancing, thinking it's a great celebration, going to Needle Spark in Amsterdam, and I guarantee you, that would not have happened unless it was too permissive of a society. Not saying that's going to happen there, but making the point that being too permissive on something of this nature can be a very, very dangerous slippery slope. Please be mindful of that, and I ask you to reach out and look at some of the statistics in Oregon, in Colorado, some of the things that have set forth before you make some of these ordinances and see what's going on. There's a lot more to be considered than meets the eye. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speaker cards. We can now go back to city staff if you have questions on this issue. And Ms. Bill De La Pena, you're first up.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. I wanted to follow up on a couple of, one particular comment that I heard tonight, that people who've been trying to purchase buildings or lease buildings or offices are told, "No, because other entities are taking care of this." What exactly does that mean? Is there, are certain property owners not selling because they've been told that something else is already done? I'm trying to understand that.
I'm not sure what that means. Because the applicants are looking, you know, far and wide, I think that the city has created reasonable standards for location of these businesses. As I mentioned earlier, we have several applicants that already have certified locations, another one that is certifiable under existing rules, another one that's certifiable under proposed rules, another one still to be determined. But clearly, there are sites that meet all of the city's standards, that do have owners that are willing to consider this, and they are in different locations. Clearly, the city cannot control a private, or should never control, a private property owner's opinion as to what they want to sell or lease their property for. That's not our role. Our role, as staff sees it, is to help create a reasonable set of standards on a very complex issue that enables a reasonable pool of applicants and a fair and competitive process. And I think that we're on that path. I think with the changes that are recommended tonight, we will accomplish it. So I'm not aware of any basis for that type of a statement.
Okay. It just sounded a little strange to me. It sounded as though there was some sort of conspiracy going on that certain property owners would tell the real estate agents, you know, "Don't sell because I want to have a lock on this." So I don't know whether that was the implication, but who knows whether that is the case. I'm looking at Mr. Kyle, who brought it up. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? I'm not seeing any speaker card, speaker requests. All right, with that, we will close the public hearing. And the public hearing is now closed, and the chair is open for discussion and/or a Mr. Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Some months ago, this council approved one medical marijuana facility here in Thousand Oaks and one testing facility, and we've been going through a selection process now for some months. The issue before us this evening has to do with ascertaining a location for that testing facility. And as we go through this process, it's become increasingly clear that some of the standards we have are just a little too restrictive, and we need to amend those standards this evening. I think these are good, common sense standards to adopt. I mean, the perfect example is someone who finds a location, and it's 600 feet or less than 600 feet from a sensitive use, but there happens to be a freeway in between. Obviously, that's a mitigating factor, and that location should potentially be considered. So this just gives staff a little more latitude. It opens up, hopefully, a greater pool of applicants, a little more competition, and ultimately, we'll get the best possible cannabis operator that we can. So I would like to make a motion that we approve AA, the municipal code amendment, and approve these and approve these common sense amendments. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, if you could, could you hold that motion just for a moment? I think Mr. Powers wants to make some comments.
Just, it's one quick comment, and forgive me for jumping in, council. I just wanted to make sure that one point that was mentioned during speaking was clarified. There were some comments regarding delivery and access to product. And I wanted Mr. Town to confirm that licensed caregivers are allowed to pick up product for their patient at a dispensary. So I just, access matters to patients, especially those that may be bedridden, and I wanted to make sure that that point was clarified.
Go ahead, Mr. Adams.
That is correct.
All right. Okay. Mr. Adams, you want to put your motion back on the table?
Yeah, our motion is back on the table. I would like to move, we approve A.A., municipal code amendment.
All right, Mr. Adams moves. Discussion, Mr. Price.
Thank you. I've heard some comments after tonight that suggested to me that, A, that the council has somehow kicked this can down the road, and I think nothing could be further from the truth. We've tried to advance this at every opportunity. This most recent extension of the application period was really at, not the request, but was done to attract more potential candidates for the single license that we will issue here in the city of Thousand Oaks at the current time. I've also heard some comments that suggested to me that maybe there are folks out there that think that this is for recreational use, and it is not. As a member of the League California Cities Public Safety Committee, that is something that we work very diligently on with the Cal Chiefs and with our policy committee in working with the organizers of this ordinance or this initiative to make it so that they didn't want the league or Cal Chiefs to oppose it. And I think both of us saw that this was a train that was, we were not going to be able to stop. And again, I'm going to say it again. As a 35-year veteran of law enforcement, this was not a day that I ever saw, or ever saw coming. Nonetheless, it is law now, but the initiative that was passed was with, done with the influence of both the Cal Chiefs and the League California Cities Public Safety Committee. And it was one, the framework of which we could work within. It allowed cities the right to outlaw, to ban, outright ban, all sorts of distribution, testing, sale. The only thing we could not ban is individual harvesting in your own home, six plants. So anybody who wants to can do that. The recommendations that are being made by staff here tonight are really allowing us to get a larger pool to select from for the, at this point, single operator that we will have in the city of Thousand Oaks. We're approaching this with baby steps because this is uncharted territory. I think that's wise to do so. And I think that this is very reasonable, the steps that we're taking. And I would certainly be in favor of that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any further comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries by zero, and your ordinance title is an ordinance amending Section 5-29.24 of Municipal Code Regarding Location of Commercial Cannabis Businesses, MCA 2018-70141.
All right, that is approved. We are going to take a very brief recess before our next public hearing. We'll reconvene at 7:50. All right, we are going to reconvene our council meeting for Tuesday, April 10, 2018. Our next item is Item 9A. That's a departmental report, and that is the pre-screening process for the general plan amendments requiring allocation of residential capacity. Mr. Town, you're going to handle this report as well?
Yes, I will.
All right. Need some water before you start or anything? It's been a busy night for you.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item, as was just mentioned, involves a review of a new pre-screening process for general plan amendments that propose allocations of residential capacity. And the purpose here is to establish, or consider establishing, a citywide process for pre-screening such amendments to the general plan that are proposing that some amount of residential capacity be allocated to the project because they could not develop their residential project under their existing general plan designation. As you recall, currently, we have two different processes for pre-screening of general plan amendments. And just as a little refresher for the public, this is the very first step in a general plan amendment process, the pre-screening. That starts the process. It is simply a decision to greenlight a project or not, to go through the process. Any such projects would then have to, by ordinance, go before the Planning Commission for recommendation and then come back to you for final action, you being the city council. In the past, again, we've looked at projects in two different ways, and that was based on whether the projects were outside of the downtown specific plan, which is specific plan number 20 abbreviated here. And an example of that kind of a project is the Pinecrest site on Wilbur. And then you have considered several projects, all mixed use within the downtown specific plan number 20, including 299, 1850, and 2219. And just a picture tells a thousand words. This is the Pinecrest site, and I use this simply as an example to remind everyone of how we have traditionally looked at general plan amendment requests for allocation of units outside this specific plan. And essentially, it involves looking at the site from an aerial photograph perspective. We look at adjacent land uses. We look at adjacent zoning. We look at the site itself. In this case, as you recall, was, or is still institutional, there was a proposal for a medium-density residential, which was later withdrawn. But this did come before you. You allowed them to go potentially through the process based on that kind of information. Now compare that to, for instance, 299 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which you also looked at in terms of pre-screening. Obviously, there's a world of difference for projects inside the specific plan. Applicants are required for pre-screening purposes to provide a conceptual site plan, grading plan, elevations, including cross-sections, and then artist renderings, which this is. This is looking at the property looking north, and this is adjacent to the Sinclair Building on the left, if you know that, the four-story building on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So a very, very significant difference between, and I'll go back, between the way we've looked at general plan amendment requests outside this specific plan and the way that we look at those inside. So again, a unified process would have a couple of obvious benefits. One is it is clearly more equitable between applicants. We would be treating applicants on more even ground. It would also require a more rigorous projects, rigorous process for projects outside the downtown specific plan. You directed us to look into this back in October of last year, and then the Planning Commission reviewed it and recommended the proposed approach at their meeting on March 19. So a few sort of higher-level aspects of the recommended process. One is timing. Staff is not recommending that you consider pre-screen requests on a fixed-time basis. In other words, not annually, not quarterly. We think that they are best reviewed on an as-needed basis. This avoids any unnecessary delays on the part of the applicant, and you can consider them as soon as they are ready for your review. Obviously, it's more flexible. The only caveat I would say is that if we have two projects that are close to each other, within, say, a month or two months, and they would otherwise go to you on separate calendars, we may want to actually group those so that you could compare two projects side by side without an unnecessary delay for either one. And we would continue to recommend that the seminal requirements that exist today for the downtown specific plan would be applicable to any project, including conceptual site and grading plans, and then cross-sections, elevations, and a rendering, as you just saw. So to detail the process a little bit more, we are recommending that projects throughout the city, anywhere in the city, including downtown, be evaluated on four basic criteria: site suitability, the design quality, contribution to our state-mandated RENA, affordable housing targets, and then community benefits. There would be a fifth category for projects within the downtown specific plan to sort of zero in on those special standards in that area. We are also recommending that a development agreement be part of this process to lock in community benefits as well as standards for the applicant. Our approach that we're recommending tonight is non-numerical, non-weighted. This is how we've approached it for projects in the downtown area, which I think has worked well. And, you know, the evidence is in those three projects that you've already reviewed. So just a little bit more detail on these five topics. Site suitability, you know, we would look at how suitable it is for residential use in terms of adjacent uses. We would look at the number of units, the intensity of the site. Building height would, of course, be reviewed. And proximity to services. We think that having reasonable proximity to shopping, recreation, and transit is beneficial for any residential site. In terms of design quality, we're speaking here of architecture, site, landscape, design, really looking for projects that stand out from the others, not just a product that meets city standards but exceeds it. Circulation is a key consideration on any project, both pedestrian and for vehicles. Preservation of oak and landmark trees is a key goal. And then the overarching goal of, does the project comply with city goals, policies, and regulations? And I know that's a broad statement, but it does capture the sort of variety of policies that we compare all projects to in the development review process. Third is simply the project's contribution to meeting state-mandated housing targets. And when I say that, the state mandates that we try to achieve housing production in certain income categories. Those are moderate, lower, very low, and above moderate. And so for a project, and the hardest in that range to meet are the very low and lower income categories. And so if a project provides housing toward those income categories, we think that that's a plus and should be recognized. The fourth category, again, applicable to any project, is in exchange for receiving these valuable units potentially from you, what is the applicant providing to the community? Is there affordable housing beyond what the applicant could otherwise acquire through the density bonus program, for instance? Are any land or funds being proposed for public purpose? Off-site public infrastructure, like the Griffin Affordable or Assisted Living Project that you just considered, that voluntarily provided a roundabout because that's what the adjacent neighborhood asked for. That wasn't the city requirement. They voluntarily stepped up and provided that. Green building standards, does the project exceed the state minimums? Are there amenities for residents, you know, tot areas for the kids, barbecue areas for parties and so forth, and other community benefits? Staff feels this is really important because as you consider these projects going forward, it's important in our mind to ensure that the project really provides something back to the community in exchange for what you would be providing to the applicant. And then finally, for projects in the downtown area, in addition to those other four categories, we would address key issues that are required in the plan. These are straight out of the current standards that we use. In other words, does the project provide good pedestrian connections to and along Thousand Oaks Boulevard? How does the project provide housing units above the commercial area, and how many? And then a key factor is, is the project potentially a catalyst for other development in the downtown area? So in conclusion, I just wanted to make two points, both of which I think are important. First is that this approach would enable us to look at all projects in terms of, through a similar lens in terms of appropriateness for additional residential capacity. And then, the most important is that I think it helps to ensure that residential capacity is only allocated for those projects that really provide, and I think the keywords here are substantial community benefit in exchange for that capacity. So with that, staff is recommending that city council adopt the pre-screening process citywide as described in the draft resolution in your staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions. As well as to my left is Jeff Spector, Senior Planner, who has played a lead role on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. We have a couple of questions from council members. Ms. Bill de La Peña?
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Mr. Town, thank you for the slide presentation and the suggested categories for pre-screening. I have a few questions. The way I read it, the pre-screening, is it pre-screening for general plan land use map amendments? Is it a pre-screening before we initiate a general plan amendment to take the requested units from another neighborhood in Thousand Oaks?
This process would be applicable for any project that's requiring additional residential capacity. So even today, as you know, there are many units in the downtown area and in the citywide pools. This process would be applicable to those existing units as well as any other potential units that were added to that residential capacity. So it would be a new unified process applicable to both the units that are currently available for potential allocation by yourselves and any other units that would be added to those pools.
Okay, so that I'm clear. I know on April 24, we have a hearing on how many units or whether to add any units to the Measure E Bank. So suppose that we're not adding any units to the Measure E Bank. We're doing the pre-screen, because we have 500 units in there plus a density bonus, that's 35% more. They would go through, the applicant would have to go through the process, the pre-screening process, and if it were to receive high grades or a high score, we would then, the council would then go to another hearing and asking for, say, 200 units to be put once the 550 or so are exceeded, to go into this other bank and ask for a general plan amendment to add those units into the Measure E Bank? How, I'm a little confused on that.
Okay, so this pre-screening process is applicable to the 500 units that you mentioned that are already in the bank, and it would be applicable to any other units that would potentially go into a Measurie reserve. The units, once they're in one of those pools, they can only be allocated out to a project through another general plan amendment process, which has three steps. Initiation, which is synonymous with the pre-screening. When you pre-screen a process, that is the general plan initiation. And then the project would have to go to Planning Commission ultimately, and then come back to you for final action. So that's the basic process. So we're talking here about the process that any applicant would go to, would go through if they want to have any additional residential capacity allocated to their property, whether it's from the units that are available today, the units available tomorrow. It's really independent of the issue that you're going to be considering on the 24, which is the package of general plan amendments. This is the process that we would look at citywide to allocate units out to a proposed project. And again, a lot of it stems from the fact that we have these two really disparate processes today. One for projects proposed inside the specific plan, One for projects proposed inside the specific plan, the downtown specific plan, and one for those located outside.
Okay. What you're saying is exactly what I was assuming. I just needed to confirm because, in a way, or in a sense, by requiring this pre-screening in order to initiate a general plan amendment to get those units, then the issue of the April 24th hearing may almost be moot, only because, right now, we don't even have applications for 550 units before us. But, once we go past that, we will need additional units. So, in a few years from now, when we have pre-screenings, we would hold those in order to tap into the pool of the 1,080 units.
If I could just interject, what this is about is really, you know, as we talked about over the years, the City Council has been presented with opportunities to, or requests to initiate general plan amendments for residential project. The most recent one was the KB Homes on the Old Pinecrest School Site. And that was a very perfunctory meeting. That was a very perfunctory review of that. Since we've developed pre-screening processes for development of residential projects on the Boulevard, it makes sense to us that any request for residential development throughout the rest of the city should go through that same process. And that's what this is. It has nothing to do with how many units are available for allocation, whether it's one or whether it's 1,000. It's really irrelevant. It only, the whole purpose of this is just to establish a more rigorous process and keep it kind of consistent and equal with what we already require of those residences, residential projects in the Boulevard. Really is irrelevant to how many units are available.
No, I get that, but I think, I guess I'm interpreting it differently. So, but I understand. I understand that this is a comprehensive application to all of the process, to the screening process.
Right.
So, that, it makes perfect sense.
Okay. But, as for next week's meeting, it's still a relevant meeting, as for next week, or the next City Council's discussion, it's still a relevant discussion because it's independent of this.
Okay. It may be independent, but it is, nonetheless, we would be drawing from the same, from a bank of units.
Any requests, any requests for general plan amendment, again, whether it's on the Boulevard, whether it's up in, you know, Dos Vientos.
Regardless of the location, certainly.
And regardless of how many units are available.
Exactly.
Okay.
No, I get that. And, again, I think that it almost cancels each other out, simply because it is, even though it is separate, it...
Yeah, they really don't cancel each other out, only because, trying to explain this, maybe I'm not being clear. Help me out here, Mr. Town.
Because next week, we're going through the process of general plan amendments to, perhaps, to put 1,080 units into the bank. So, maybe this is really a title for, the title should be pre-screening for allocation of units, not general plan amendment.
Before you speak, Mr. Town, I just wanted to, maybe I can quickly weigh in and help a little bit. I was just referencing back to last year's City Council top priorities. One of the priorities that you identified, number eight, was expanding housing opportunities. And one of the bullets under that was consideration for expanding our, what the council had deemed a very successful process in pre-screening applications for the Boulevard on a citywide basis. So, from an equitability standpoint, any unit that is being allocated, and like Ms. Noonan mentioned, whether that's one, or 100, or 1,000, whatever's in the bank, any unit, would go through the same type of rigorous pre-review process for unit allocation, and then follow the natural chain of development from that point forward. Go ahead, Mark.
That is exactly how I understand it. I do.
And if I could, just perhaps one example of the import of what we're talking about. As I mentioned, the Pinecrest project, which you considered, given the less robust process for projects outside the downtown area, you had limited information. That application was withdrawn. So, we don't have an active application on it now. However, it's possible that somebody could come back in and propose the same project, say, next month, entirely independent of how many units are in the, you know, available today or potentially available tomorrow. It's very possible that somebody will come back in and propose something else on that property. If they were to do that, and if you were to adopt this citywide process, you would be seeing for that property the same level of detail that you have been seeing for the downtown projects. You'd see the actual building design. You'd see the grading, the site plan. You'd have a much better idea about what it looks like. And that would give you, I think, a much better basis to make your decisions in terms of allocation. So, really doesn't have anything to do with the number of units. What it really has to do with is providing a much more clear and, I think, appropriate process for these projects that, like Pinecrest, in the past have been evaluated based on, really, a minimal amount of information, if I may. And this would bolster that information and give you the kind of detail that you saw on downtown projects, and such as I just showed in the PowerPoint, as the 299 project that you looked at.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad we're having this hearing tonight because this is when we discuss this in the open, in front of the public. It's transparent, and every council member should be allowed to ask any questions that are vital to this issue. So, I'm just seeking clarification. That's all I'm seeking. Regarding the scenic highway corridor, is that something that will be part of Item 2D, which is the city guidelines? Or is the scenic highway corridor considered under the guide of orderly development?
No, we would review it upfront. It's an important city policy. So, we would look at issues like that, issues such as the freeway corridor guidelines. We would review projects according to all basic city policies. The only caveat there is that, of course, we have only basic information upfront. You're really looking at the concept more than the details. And after the pre-screening, the applicant would go through the normal development process, review process, does a much more detailed evaluation going forward. But, we would look at issues like scenic highway, freeway corridor guidelines.
And I'm glad to see that there is a mention of height. Given the recent case where the Planning Commission had a study session, how will these screening process, pre-screening criteria, affect a case like the one the Planning Commission recently discussed?
Well, it would explicitly require that height be considered, whether it's in the context of the downtown plan, and the number of stories, and the 50-foot height average, or whether it's in the context of the applicable zoning standard for that property, and whatever the height standard is. Typically, it's 25 feet or 35 feet. But, as you know, the Planning Commission and the City Council can grant reasonable waivers on a case-by-case basis. And so, we would want to look at that, and what is the reason if it does exceed the average height and related issues? So, I think building height, when you're talking about residential properties, is important. And we would have an analysis or a review, as we just had on the proposed project on Herb's Road.
Just for clarification, though, remember, this only applies to projects that are requesting a general plan amendment. The project that went before the Planning Commission was already zoned and already designated residential.
It was.
Wouldn't go through that process.
Yeah, it was. But, in case something similar pops up in the future, how would we deal with that?
Well, if it requires a general plan amendment, then this is the process it would go through. If it doesn't require a general plan amendment, then this process would not be applicable.
Okay. Thank you. And, obviously, the trees are important, and the trees are mentioned in here, although they're in category number three rather than one or two. Also, the green building standards. We've been talking about gray water. Is that something that would be included in the pre-screening process?
Yes, it would.
The other question I wanted to ask was regarding RENA, the RENA units. We've had requests for the 35% density bonus, which has led to four stories, which is really out of the norm, because normally, we just require or have a maximum of three stories. But, because of the 35% density bonus, a couple of projects have been proposed to go four stories. How would that be handled by the pre-screening process? If somebody came in and said, "I want to do 35% density bonus and need to go four stories or higher"?
So, as we've discussed in the past, density bonus is a state law that mandates cities basically allow additional density if they provide affordable housing. And, again, the big difference here is when a project doesn't require a general plan amendment. As you know, whenever there's a legislative decision that has to be made, a zoning change or a general plan change, City Council has a lot more discretion. When it's already zoned and designated for residential, then you lose a little bit of that discretion. So, if you have a project that is, let's say it's right now zoned industrial, and they come to the City Council, and it's out in the Rancho Caneo area, and they say, "You know what? It's right next to this other residential area. I really think residential uses are appropriate here." And we put them through the pre-screening process. If they are providing affordable housing, and if they are asking for a 35% density bonus, and it exceeds the height thing, you have much more discretion to say, "I don't want it to exceed the height," because you have the legislative discretion to deny the change in the general plan.
Okay. Now, I have not had any opportunity to discuss this particular agenda item with staff prior to this meeting, which is the reason I'm asking all these questions. So, please bear with me. So, if there's an application with, before the Planning Department or with the Planning Department, that does not require a general plan amendment, and so, and is within a residential area already, then the pre-screening does not apply. So, how many of these projects may we actually see that would require a general plan amendment, realistically?
It's a bit difficult to predict. You have considered three in the last approximately year, year and a half. Whether more will come forward is really difficult to project. You know, the economy is reasonably good right now, but it's just difficult to sort of project. We don't have a lot of contacts in terms of potential proposals right now, but it's likely that you would see one or two in the next year or so. And just, if I may, just to go back to your points a moment ago, in terms of that potential fourth floor, if it's a project that requires a general plan amendment, that's a great example of where it's up to you. If the applicant wants those units and they want that fourth floor, then what is the community receiving in response? Is it affordable housing, or public space, or commercial space, or quality of tenants, that kind of thing? Or some other community benefit like that roundabout that I mentioned earlier? So, it gives you the ability to leverage, essentially, those units to really get a top-quality project, and one that gives something back to the community.
That and the development agreement proposal.
Okay. Which leads me to the next point, and that probably is going to be my final point, is the, if a developer is proposing to build a certain number of units but doesn't want to build affordable housing, which really is low-income housing, can we then ask the developer, through a development agreement, to pay an in-lu fee into our housing trust fund so that we can actually provide a affordable, low-income apartment building in concert with many mansions somewhere in the city, because that is where we're really hurting?
Development agreement gives us so much flexibility. And so, one of the benefits of it is that you can basically have an in-lu type of a negotiation, and it is a negotiation.
The reason I mention it is because we have suspended the in-lu housing fees for now, going on five years, perhaps, maybe even longer, which had helped putting money into the housing trust fund, which we used to help many mansions purchase lots or buildings and turn them into low-income housing. That's why I'm mentioning that. So, is that something that would be incorporated somewhere here in the pre-screening criteria?
So, one point, and maybe Tracy can elaborate on it, in sort of modern development standards, what we've seen in a lot of cities, development agreements are really superseding, overarching in-lu housing fees that are established, because it gives you that flexibility and autonomy to address every individual project in that manner.
And what I actually like about the development agreement component is that it is flexible enough that we can look at each project on its own merits. One case, we might want housing on-site. One case, we might not. One case, we might want some open, I mean, the universe is much wider that way by doing it through a development agreement. It really gives you the flexibility.
Because, yes, there are ways to provide low-income housing elsewhere in the city, not necessarily within a mixed-use project, because who wants to go four stories or five stories? It's, you know, in some instances, it would probably be better to just help many mansions as well in providing low-income housing elsewhere in the city. So, and that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
No other questions? Mr. Price? Okay?
Thank you. So, the sort of exercise that the Planning Commission went through with respect to that development, in that case there, the council could take the, or with a development agreement, we could ask that, or suggest, or maybe even force that those units, those additional units be built somewhere else, or money paid into a fund that could assist, as Council Member Bill de La Peña is suggesting, with an affordable housing project that might be completed with Manna, or, excuse me, not Manna, but many mansions? Is that...
Well, actually...
Yeah, you refer to the apartment project?
Yes.
Yeah, that one, again, is already zoned residential and designated residential. Yeah. So, again, this process would not apply to that type of...
No, I understand that. I guess I didn't...
Right. And there are a few occasions where we have actually executed development agreements on a residential basis, but, you know, when they're already zoned residential, but that's pretty unique to do that.
Okay.
And most of the time, a developer wouldn't want to do it.
Under the scenario that I described, though, if it did require a general plan amendment, we could, in fact, through the use of a development agreement...
Yes. Yes.
Extract some units. Yes.
Yes.
All right. This did not come through the committee. This is our clarity. No. All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay, this is a departmental report, so there's no public hearing. So, what is the pleasure of the council? Mr. Town, do you have any follow-up comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mary. I'm prepared to make a motion. First of all, there's no guarantee that in this pre-screening process, if the council deems that the project has enough merit to potentially award it units, that that project's going to be built. Then, it's going to have to go back down to the Community Development Department, the Planning Commission, and then back up to the council again. That's the first point. The second point is whether we have one unit in the bank, or 50 units, or 100 units, it's irrelevant. This is a way to just dole out those units based on the merit of the project. And I think that that's exactly what this pre-screening does. It gives us the ability to really judge a project on its merits. And, you know, when there was a lot of capacity in the city, the procedure used to be you'd go to Community Development Department, then maybe the Planning Commission, and ultimately the City Council. Well, that capacity is so limited now that I think we do need a more rigorous procedure to dole out that capacity. And we decided to do that with the Boulevard, with the specific plan for the Boulevard, because the council felt that the Boulevard was so important to develop properly, we decided to put this extra layer of scrutiny in. And now, I think it's time to extend that throughout the rest of the city, again, because of the minimal amount of units that we have to dole out. And I'm particularly impressed with the criteria that you've provided with us to judge these projects, especially the community benefits department... projects, especially the community benefits department part. I mean, this is nothing but good for the city and the citizens that live in it, things that we can insist on, affordable housing, infrastructure projects, improvements, amenities, green building, gray water, all those things are, that was the longest part of the list, which I think is very appropriate. So, you know, this is going to give us the ability to make sure a project is good, and we get the highest and best use of the little bit of land that we have left to develop. So I would like to make a motion that we approve 9A, the pre-screening process for general plan amendments.
All right, Mr. Adams moves 9A. Discussion on the motion. All right. Hearing done. Madam Clerk, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. All right. Item 10, we have no reports. Item 11, we have no reports. Item 12, council follow-up meetings and conferences. Do we have anything on that? Okay, we have nothing there. Item 13 is the city manager report. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Our next regular City Council meeting will be two weeks from tonight, on the 24th of April. We currently have one special presentation, an annual update from 211 of Ventura County. We have a public hearing, as referenced earlier, on residential GPAs, general plan amendments. We have two department reports, one, adoption of our municipal operations sustainability plan, and consideration of a potential business tax measure on cannabis, as we dealt with that issue earlier this evening. That is it for that calendar right now.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. That brings us to item 14. That's a closed session, and the city attorney has two announcements on that.
Yes, actually, there are two matters that are agendized. However, the item number 14B will not be heard tonight. We will only be moving forward with 14A, and that's conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4.
And with that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled council meeting for Tuesday, April 24th, 2018. We are adjourned. Have a great week.